We did have sixteen kids that left care during the first quarter. Nine of them were adopted, or there was a transfer of custody. And then seven did return home to the family or the household that they removed from. We have twelve right now in the adoption queue that are waiting to be finalized. And just another variable that we keep a close eye on is our out-of-state placements. And currently, we have no kids that are placed in out-of-state for mental health treatment. In the corrections world, we had twelve kids that are in total in out-of-home placement. Four new kids went into care during the fourth quarter of 2020. And we've had one in during, in, from corrections that transitioned out of home placement, and two that moved to less restrictive. Now, I'm gonna have you jump to the budget worksheet. So just to recap, our out-of-home placement budget for 2020, the net was 3.178 million dollars. So that is after expenses and revenues. For, and that was a decrease from the 2019 as well as the 2018. We are on track during, since the first quarter of 2021 to come slightly under our budget and remain consistent with last year. Questions related to the budget? So on page three, back to the multiple, multiple-page report. Can I already review the open cases, the CHIPS filed? Of course, that work is directly in combination with the county attorney's office. We work very closely with them, have a strong partnership, and thankful for that partnership. For foster care licensing, this would be the area that is responsible for recruitment and retention of our family foster homes. So when kids are placed in out-of-home placement, our primary responsibility is working both reunification with the removal home, as well as establishing permanency for that child long-term. We initially look for placement with relative, because it's very important to keep kids connected with their culture and their family. So that involves a very intensive process of doing a relative search, vetting those relatives, background study, and getting them licensed. Of course, when we have an increase of the number of kids that go into care, we have a greater demand in licensing, because we're doing more relative search and relative licensing. Currently, we have seventy-two homes that are licensed, and we have twenty-nine that are pending. Eighteen of those are relatives, and eleven are non-relatives. We're always in the stage of recruiting for family foster homes. And we feel word of mouth works really well, as well as social media, dispatch, the radio. So we, we try to get the word out there that we're always looking for family foster homes. And there are options with becoming licensed. You can be a respite provider, you can provide shelter, those are the homes that are on call. So when our staff gets a call at 2:00 a.m. for law enforcement saying there's a need for a safe home, we call our shelter homes to open their hearts and homes to those kids. And then we also have permanency options. So if you would like to be a permanent, be considered for permanency, that's also a consideration in being licensed. On page four is the overview of the adoptions. You may recall that back in 2017 and 2018, we had shifted and used interns and temp staff so that we could have one staff specialize in adoptions. We had recognized a backlog from the number of kids that had went into care during the 2016 and 2017, and there was a number of factors with why that backlog existed in our permanency and filing of the adoptions. And since we have then, were able to, the board approved us to hire an additional staff in 2018, we've been able to keep one social worker that remains specialized in adoption. She has other tasks, but she really makes sure that we are moving cases through, and that paperwork is being done timely, working with DHS, working with the adoption home, and having those finalized. And we were able to get the last of that backlog cleaned up during 2019. So we're, we're now on track. So we had nineteen during 2020 that was finalized, and we should be on track to continue to keep up with that work during 2021.
What would you project for adoptions coming this year?
Well, for example, right now, we have twelve that are pending. It really depends on the, how the, the family or the parents progress during their case plan, as to whether or not we reunify, or if we are looking at a transfer custody or adoption. So it is hard to predict on, on the number. But if the case, if the numbers remain consistent, and the engagement of the families remain consistent, it'll be similar to the twenty, twenty number, which would be twenty. Another program that is, happens within the, the family service team, as well as very important to the out-of-home placement budget, is children's mental health. So we do provide case management to youth that meet the criteria. We also work very closely with our community partners that provide children's mental health case management as well. In 2019, we did receive a Systems of Care grant through SAMSA to implement the CIBS program. And I apologize, in the program, or in the report, I did not spell it out. It's Collaborative Intensive Bridging Service is what CIBS stands for. We are in our final year of that grant. We've had over fifteen youth that have participated or are currently going through that program. We've had very positive outcomes, and we look forward to coming before the board in July, when we have the out-of-home placement second quarter review, to talk about the continuation of this program and what that looks like here in Crow Wing County. So we'll provide a very comprehensive review of the outcomes for that work. Then the family preservation and child welfare efforts. These are families that, whether they are at risk for child protection, or open them up, or continue to work with them to prevent further deeper end need for child protection, prevent potentially out-of-home placement, and any other safety factors. One of the supporting grants under the, the child welfare case management is the, the P-SOP, or the Parent Support Outreach Program. You'll note the second bullet, I did not update that data. So for 2019 and 2020, we continue to have very similar positive outcomes with less than twenty percent of the families going or needing further involvement with the child protection system. Crossover is another program that we implemented in the spring of 2016. Again, you may recall that we had shifted staff internally using temp funds as well as interns to demonstrate that we could make a difference. And then in 2018, we hired a social worker that works specific with crossover youth. So these are youth that are at risk to become involved in the delinquencies, delinquency system, or have had involvement. Relative search, I talked about the importance of that, as well as supervised visits. So during supervised visits, our staff monitor and help the parents with skill building and any other areas of need. The, the chart on the bottom of page five shows the number of CMH, that would be the blue, so the bottom, of CMH cases. While the demand for children's mental health case management has increased, our numbers have remained stagnant because of the work that we do with the community partners. So we have three agencies that also provide children's mental health case management. The service is reimbursed through medical assistance or Medicaid, and so agencies are able to provide that service and then bill the state. There are families that are not eligible for medical assistance, or maybe have commercial insurance, and those are primarily the families that we open up case management for, because there's not a billing entity for those.
Who are the organizations that you work with?
Three.
Yeah, who are they?
Greater, Greater Minnesota provides children's mental health, Nystroms and Associates, and Northern Pines Mental Health. And they contract directly with the managed care plans to provide that service. And then we consult with them monthly on the cases, because their cases are at risk as well for out-of-home placement. So we want to make sure that if there's any preventative services, that we can get into the home, or if there's a need for respite or a family foster home, to work on regulation for the youth and to help the parents with their skill building, we work very closely with those providers. In 2020, we did see a dramatic increase in the amount of child welfare case openings, and that was due to hiring two additional program specialists to conduct child welfare case management services. And those positions were funded by pulling contracts in that we were contracting with a community agency to provide intensive in-home and respite services. We brought those contracts in, as well as we can bill child welfare case management So as you can see, management of the out-of-home placement budget really is a, it's a multi-pronged approach. A number of the elements are outside of the scope of, of what we can control or influence, you know, whether that's people making poor choices, general health and well-being of parents, backlog in a judicial system, the availability of service providers, poverty rates, I could go on and on. So we work really hard to influence internally our, where our resources are going, so that we are being preventative, that we are looking towards preservation first, also always working then the reunification, as well as the permanency, and have a high level of oversight in our operations and our casework internally.
Are you experiencing any problems in, in finding families to adopt, and families who will foster care?
There's always a need for, for families. So definitely, especially for older kids, or kids that have high medical or behavioral needs, those are the ones that we have the hardest time finding permanency homes for.
So it continues to be a challenge?
Yes. And we work, we rely heavily on our community to help us out, and we're very thankful for the foster parents that we have.
In the budget, the revenues seem to have gone down over the course of time. Is there a reason for that? Is that related to the legislature? Is it a timing issue? What?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So as the number of kids, so this sounds complicated or counterproductive, but as the number of kids in care and our expenses go down, our revenues go down. And depending on what type of placement they're in, there's a higher or a lower amount of reimbursement that we receive from either the state or federal. And then even internally, we have ways to receive reimbursements, whether that's through recapture of social security if the child receives it, if the child has adoption assistance, stash, establishment of child support, or parental fee, if the kid, if the parents are able to pay. So that's kind of that third pot of how, of the revenue, of how we received revenue. This last quarter, we noticed that because of, so it would have been fourth quarter of 2020, we had a lower number of kids in care, and we paid out less, we had less expenses. And so our revenues that we received dropped dramatically. And what we're learning is that if the revenues go past or below a certain, certain threshold, then we have to pay more towards the cost of care. The county's share is higher.
So they penalize you for doing a good job? You don't have to answer that. I'll live with my statement. Any other questions? I don't know, are you at the end here?
Yes, yes, open a question.
Any other questions for Kara, Kara, whatever we're going by today?
Griffin is fine.
Well, thank you very much, appreciate this. It's always one of those that we knock on wood and pray that it'll continue to either be stable or go down, but we realize it's a volatile situation, so. Thank you very much, and to your staff for all the work they do trying to address these issues. It's a big undertaking, to say the least, so thank you very much.
Yeah, as, as much as the numbers in the reports reflect just that, the numbers in report, or numbers in the data and the trends, but ultimately, it takes a team of very hard working, dedicated, to do this work every day. So very grateful for the team that we have.
Well, I know there's a lot of times when it becomes very emotional over there for your team, so. That's understood, and we appreciate what they go through, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number two is direct care and treatment, DNMC. Ms. Luick?
Good morning, Chair Barrows and commissioners. Thank you for letting me attend virtually today, and I believe Nathan Bertram is also there and maybe coming up to the table, just for any questions. So we shared as well a document with you that speaks to our state facility summary. This will not only reflect first quarter, but we will also be able to look at the end of the year as well. Just to reiterate, state facility costs include the cost of care for those at Anoka Regional Metro Treatment Center. After thirty days, we are, we pay twenty percent of their cost of care. We have those under commitment that no longer meet medical criteria at either the AMRTC or our community behavioral health hospitals, CBHHs, and sometimes you'll hear us refer to it as DNMC. We also have the mentally ill and dangerous that are housed at St. Peter, and then the sexually dangerous. The current daily rate at Anoka is $1,396, and at the CBHH, it's $1,524. As I said, counties are responsible for a hundred percent of the daily cost when an individual no longer meets criteria for the inpatient hospital setting. So going, moving into first quarter, we'll take a look at that here first. So our first quarter, we've had one individual that hit the thirty days cost of care, or thirty days plus, which has resulted in $12,842. We have thirteen individuals that we are charged ten percent of their cost of care, and that's $68,599. And then we have three individuals currently committed mentally ill and dangerous at St. Peter, and their cost of care is $43,800. And then we've had one individual during first quarter that met the, does not meet criteria at $5,584. Looking at the state facility cost comparison from 2020 to 2021 first quarter, and this is not, 2020 is for the whole year, 2021 is just for first quarter, but just to give you a little bit of an indication of where we're sitting for the quarter in comparison to last year for the whole year.
So Tammy, excuse me, but that first graph, was that for a month or for a quarter?
For a quarter.
For a quarter. And the second graph is just comparing the two years, correct?
Yep, and I did, I did not compare 2020 first quarter, I just did the whole year, just so you can kind of see how we're shaping up against, just from a quarterly basis, against the annual budget of 2020, or what we spent in 2020.
Okay, and to be clear on that second graph, the lighter green is 2021, the first quarter, and the darker green is 2020?
Correct. And then the second page of our document, just looking, just at, does not meet criteria, because that was an area that obviously you can see was really impacting us from a budget standpoint, especially in 17, 18, and 19. We're just showing the, kind of where we're sitting, and where, we came in at 2020, which was the $29,602, and we had twenty-nine individuals in care, sorry, twenty-nine days in 2020 as well. And you can see that the years prior, we had 429 and 442 in 2018. So some questions that came to mind as I was looking through the data was, you know, I think one of the questions that people ask is, well, how many individuals was that? And so we had, just looking at 2018, we had nineteen individuals, so it was twenty-three average days of care. In 2019, it was thirteen individuals, which resulted in about thirty-three average days of care. Last year, we had nine individuals that did not meet that criteria at 3.22 days of care. And this year, just with the one individual, it was four days of care. The circumstances related to the individual that, that happened this year, it's my understanding, we received our DNMC kind of late in the week. The placement was arranged, but we had a weekend in there, and with getting the transportation set up, it resulted in the four days of care, being that it had fell over a weekend, which is sometimes what happens. So that one was not a result of, maybe other than maybe just the state maybe letting us know. It's, we, we don't get a lot of notice when it comes to these. We might be hearing that there will not, that this may be coming, but typically, we just receive the notice and then, and then it's that day that they don't meet criteria, and we're, and you have to go kind of getting this all set up.
So Tammy, a quick question for you on, on this, and I'm impressed with these numbers going down like this. What I hear from other counties is the struggle to find placement for clients, and it appears from what I'm seeing here, that we do a pretty darn good job, or we at least have a good ability to place our clients. Is that true in Crow Wing County versus other counties?
So some of the things that I believe are impacting the changes that we're seeing, kind of as Kara Griffin mentioned, you know, just using a multi-pronged approach, we, as you probably remember, we did hire a regional transition specialist through our Adult Mental Health Initiative. They are employed through Sourcewell, and that individual's full responsibility is to work on these individuals that potentially would get stuck, and look for those placement options, and try to fit, try to really work with the person to have the placement option be something that they want, as well as, you know, meeting the needs of that individual as well, so that hopefully those are really successful placements. The other thing has been that the team has been doing a weekly commitment meeting, so the team, Nathan's team, meets weekly with the regional transition specialist included in that, and they discuss the cases that we currently have under commitment. On average, looking back just at the last three months, we typically have on average between five and six individuals at one of these state facilities under commitment at any given time. And then we usually have about five to seven individuals that are either in another private hospital, like Prairie St. John's, they may be in jail, or maybe they're in the community, and they are being summoned to appear, or maybe they're on a stay of commitment. But there, you know, there's some things going on with them, that we're kind of always reviewing what's happening with them. The other thing would be our case management. We did add to our case management team, I think, a year and a half, year ago, year and, little over a year ago, and we have been able to provide more mental health case management. I think currently, our numbers are, we have about a hundred and eighty-four individuals receiving mental health case management. We also know that we did some work in the community with a supportive housing project, White Oaks, that's over in Baxter, which is the twenty-unit mental health supportive housing apartment. And that has also been a, an option for individuals that potentially may be coming out of one of these settings. The other thing I could speak to, too, just quickly, and then I'll ask for questions, I would say our partnership with law enforcement, hospitals, crisis services, and our embedded social workers in the jail have all been instrumental in the work that we're doing around crisis situations, as well as these types of cases that, where individuals may be committed.
Nathan, did you?
I think the only thing I was gonna add, that weekly commitment consult meeting we do, we do have the waiver team on there as well to help with that housing search, and so sometimes we're looking, people are just starting in the commitment process, they might not even had their commitment hearing yet, and we're already identifying, okay, housing's gonna be an issue down the road, what do we need to start getting lined up at this point? So just, I think, allows us to be a little bit more streamlined when we get to the, the point that they're ready to leave the hospital, so.
That sounds like a good approach, given what the state is doing, which they don't give you a notice of more than a couple days to, that they've met that criteria, and they don't longer, no longer need to be there, so. And Tammy, just real quick, on the person that works at Sourcewell, if I remember correctly, that person is also working on the behalf of other counties at the same time. Is that correct, if I remember right? And are they, are they doing a better job for Crow Wing than some of the other counties, or is that hard to determine?
Yeah, no, I, I think they're doing a good job for all of us. So it's Mike Willey, he's an employee of Sourcewell. As I said, this is funded through our Adult Mental Health Initiative grant that we receive for the region, so he does cover the six counties in our region. And one thing I would say is that our, we definitely have more individuals that go under commitment, or that would be, you know, would be recommended for commitment. You know, the last, just looking at the last, the same timeframe, you know, we had fifty-one individuals that were recommended for commitment in 2017, forty-seven for 2018, fifty-one in 2019, and then in 2020, which maybe we would have seen a dip, you maybe would have thought with COVID, we were at forty-nine. So, so I think just knowing that Sourcewell, that position does dedicate a lot of time to our county with the number of commitments that we have in comparison to the other counties around our region. But I would say, we're, we're well aware of the work that he's doing in a number of the counties, and some of the barriers that they faced when an individual's been at the AMRTC or the CBHH.
I think it's safe to say that that was a, a good grant to get involved in, and with the person at Sourcewell. So regardless of how they focus, they're doing a good job, and we are receiving benefits from that approach. So I just want to acknowledge that it seems like that, and with the idea that you're looking ahead at these cases to prepare when they do get released or put on the DNMC list that we're prepared to place them. So thank you very much for, for that.
Chair Barrows, the other thing I'd just like to mention, just some things to be watching legislatively. As some of you know, that in the initial governor's budget, the Adult Mental Health Initiative grant was reduced, or was considered for reduction, that has been reinstated. But we do know that AMHI reform is occurring across the state over the next two years, and so I just want you to be mindful of, or be aware, that that could be affecting us regionally, and as you're, I guess, just to be aware that the work, I want you to be, to point out that this is a grant that has supported some really innovative and good things in our community, like the regional transition specialist position. The other thing that The other thing that I wanted to bring your attention to is that there is also in legislation, a couple of things that we're watching, which is that the children adolescent behavioral health hospitals, there is a cost shift looking to have us, as kids no longer meet criteria at that setting, that counties will have 100% of the cost of care as well. And one other thing that was just introduced last week is our 18 to 27-year-olds, and some restriction, well, a cost shift for 10% of the cost of care, for those that would be going into an adult foster care setting, or a customized living setting of some sort, and not in the community. So just some things that I want to just bring your attention to, to just be aware of, that we do continue to see some of these cost shifts that are occurring, and how they impact our, our county.
Thank you, I wasn't aware of the last one, but I was, I am aware of the other pieces of legislation that are being considered, and certainly they're looking to shift those costs all the time, which only puts a bigger burden on us as a county, in our property levy, so not all of what we have to do at budget time is our own doing, so appreciate everything that you folks are doing. Anything else, any questions? Commissioner Coring, any questions?
Uh, no, good, good presentation, just thanks for their hard work, appreciate it.
Thank you, Nathan, thank you, Ms. Louis, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Continue with the good work, we recognize that this is also a struggle, and this can change in a heartbeat also, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to item number three, which is Camp Ripley's Annual Community Update, Brigadier General Cruz.
I'm not sure if he's on yet.
Okay. Looks like the general may not be on yet.
His time was 10, so.
Where are we at here, oh, 8:45?
Yeah.
How long is Deb's? Where is she on? Is Deb Erickson on?
No, but I'm sure she will get on if we tell her to.
We're looking for Ms. Erickson at this time to see what that presentation length will be.
I believe she'll have Eric Sharpentier on, too.
Eric is here.
Is he okay?
Good timing.
Eric, do you know how long the presentation is?
Five minutes.
Yes.
Fifteen minutes, probably.
Okay.
She's on her way up.
Okay.
I'm okay with waiting.
Pardon me?
I'm okay with waiting, if you need me to wait, whatever you need.
I don't know how you were going to tag team this one, we're looking at the Brigadier General coming in at 10 o'clock for his report, and we want to be respectful of that, so if you can, if you and Debbie can fit that into the next 14 minutes, 13 minutes, we should go ahead with it.
I would say I don't want to rush any of her, so, you know, whatever, whatever you can.
So Debbie, we're talking about, you know, the Brigadier General coming on at 10 o'clock, and we want to respect his time.
Yes.
So are you able to fit it in this time slot?
Mr. Chair, Eric is doing the presentation on the Housing Trust Fund information, and maybe if you want to get started at it, and if we need to break to let the general take his time, that's fine, we can come back to it after that.
Okay.
So what we've asked is to have Eric Sharpentier from the Crow Wing County HRA, give the board a little bit of an update on the Housing Trust Fund, where we're at with that process, and what we're hoping to accomplish shortly, so I'll turn it over to Eric.
All right, welcome, Eric.
Thank you, Commissioners, Mr. Chair, good to see you guys again. As Debbie said, you know, really just wanting to give you guys an update on where things stand with the Housing Trust Fund. It's been about a year, actually about 13 months, since we had the ordinance accepted and adopted by the Crow Wing County Board of Commissioners, that was passed in, in February 2020. At that time, the Crow Wing County HRA set off on creating the guidelines, because this was a brand-new program, we've got just a handful of Housing Trust Funds in the state of Minnesota, so it's a relatively new thing. So a lot of groundwork had to occur, obviously, in the last year to, to try to get all the procedures completed, and do some best practices to, to gauge what other communities were doing. So that's what we've been up to in the last, really, year, trying to, to get everything from documentation, to best practice procedures, to marketing, up and running, and getting it onto a good base. Through that, we created four programs within the Housing Trust Fund, that, again, a lot of this is maybe new information to a lot of our board members, since we haven't had a chance to, to be in front of you guys for about a year. In those four programs, we talk about workforce housing assistance, and what we mean by that is, we would look at matching an employer contribution, so we're looking to get local employers involved with this, if they wanted to, to offer up some sort of incentive for a down payment for their employees to come in, and we would go up to match that up to about $5,000, would be a very low-interest payback loan over about five years, really trying to incentivize our employers if they're trying to get people up to the area, and if there is the housing stock available, if they want to partner with us in that, that's what we want to do with that program. We also do have just a homebuyer assistance program that provides kind of that gap financing for folks that might not have that full down payment, that they might need to, to get into their house, but that was the only barrier to them in creating or buying that home. We'd go up to about $20,000 for a homebuyer assistance program, 0% interest rate, which would be really great, a great incentive for these folks, and we don't look for monthly payback, but we do want it paid back if you ever to sell the home, if you're ever to refinance the home and pull out equity, or once that 30-year term of your normal first mortgage would come due, we do ask for repayment at that point. So it allows those borrowers that might be just on the cusp of buying a house, to be able to do that, and not add another payment, if they don't have that down payment. So that's really the, the second program that we're looking to, to create. Third one is rehab assistance, you know, we've got a lot of housing stock within Crow Wing County, and as some of you might see, or all of you might see, you know, some of it has definitely some needs, some, some rehab needs. And through our program, through the Brainerd HRA, John Schomer does a fantastic job, he and his team of administering the Small Cities Development Program grants for this type of work. The, the only drawback to those SCDP grants is that they are located, or they, they're clustered in maybe an eight-block radius of where we're able to get those grants. And that's all and well and good, but we can only do certain pockets in the county at a time. By creating this rehab assistance program on our side, for the county trust fund, we're able to, to not worry about those barriers. And if we've got a Small Cities Development Grant, we'll still do those in those pockets, but then we can also utilize the trust fund dollars in those areas to try to focus on new roofs, heating systems, energy efficiency for that current housing stock, because, you know, as we talk about affordability, that, that older housing stock really is the affordable housing stock out there. If we are keeping it in good order, those folks that are in that might look to sell and, and get into a little bit bigger of a house, we still want that housing stock to be there for that maybe first-time homebuyer. So that rehab assistance is, is a, you know, a vital part of, I think, the, the housing stock in the county. Last program that we're, we're creating through this is really a new development or redevelopment financing, that's where we look to partner up with some developers, to build maybe some multi-housing, multifamily housing, so apartment complexes, or, as you've seen with Brainerd Oaks, working with those developers out there to continue that process of getting those homes built, single-family house, you know, duplexes, townhomes, or up to those multifamily apartment complexes. Again, and I'll speak to this a little bit in a few moments, about what affordability means to us, but really working with those partners to, to allow us to have affordable housing stock. You know, a lot can be said of what is affordable, and I think that's always the tough thing to, to nail down for any of us, right? Affordability for us in this project, or in this, this program, truly means, you know, defining that as someone or an individual or household not paying more than 30% of their gross income. That's what affordable means to us, making sure you're not over that cap. We're not saying you have to make X amount of dollars to fit within this affordability realm, we don't want you to, to pay more than 30% of your gross income. Once you start to get above that, that 30% mark, then you're going to be really strapped for, you know, paying utilities, paying groceries. So affordability to us means that 30% gross income and less. Now, the state of Minnesota and the Department of Housing and Urban Development, on the federal side, will give us some of those dollar figures, what we call area median income, and they do go county by county and talk about what the area median income really is, and, and we can base our numbers a little bit off that, which we do. You know, for our programs that we're looking at, you know, we try to target anywhere from really 50% of area median income, which is defined as a very low income, we've got low income that is defined as 80% of area median income, and then a moderate income, which is anywhere from 80% up to 115% of area median income, this AMI. For 2021, Crow Wing County's household of four, so a four-person household, their area median income is at 70, let me find it in my paper, of course, that's not going to be on that one, 70,800. So if we look at those percentages, 115% of that area median income for a household of four is actually a household earning $81,400 a year. So when we look at our, our income caps, that's really our income cap, if you were to, to divide that out by a 12-month period, you're looking at, and then you take 30% of that, so we get back to our affordable, you know, affordable rents or, or mortgage payments, that's going to give you about $2,035 a month to work with on that high-end cap. A lot of rentals that I see around here are not at $2,000, so we, we certainly are, are having a pretty good range of folks that we want to help with this Housing Trust Fund. And when we talk about those developments for those, those apartment complexes, or maybe multifamily complexes, working with those developers to make sure we have a mix of, you know, people that are in that moderate income, people that are in that low income, and as long as they, they can keep those ratios for a certain amount of time, you know, then, then it's still considered affordable, and that's what, what our, our ideal is. And I can certainly go into the weeds with that a little bit, as, as you have questions on that. But those are really the four big programs that we're, we're creating out of this, and it's taken a while to, to figure out the procedures, best practices for those, but we are, you know, I guess I'm happy to, to say that we've got our loan note, our mortgage, and our loan agreement drafted for our rehab program, we do have an active application in for our rehab program, that's a natural fit for us, because we've done that throughout the, the Small Cities Program, so we know how to administer it, and that's probably a good first one or two, two programs to actually get moving with this, and we're excited to hopefully get that one at least closer to the finish line, to hopefully fund it, you know, because obviously, at the end of the day, we want to get some of these dollars out there. The, if we go back to what the, the, the ordinance was, there are, the language is set so that there is flexibility for the trust fund to potentially do grants, potentially do loans, it's our intention at this point, that these are loans, we want these paid back, we want this money to revolve, so I wanted to make sure that the Commissioners know that, too, you know, we, we do want this to be a sustainable program. Now, we might not have them paying back those loans for a 20-year period, or a 30-year period. Odds are, and this goes back to my, my days in banking, most people that are in a, a house, especially if it's their first house, they're typically going to be moving on from that within seven years. So while we, we might say that it's a 30-year repayment term, if they're moving, if they're choosing to move on, they will pay that back once they get that mortgage paid, and move on. So the reality of it is, we're, we're hoping that the, the funds turn over a lot quicker than, than what we're putting those maturity dates out there for, but we do want to have those out there, so we're, we're not putting undue stress on these folks that are, are maybe just, just trying to, to get into that house, because homeownership is a, a really great way to, to foster that, you know, home unit in, in, for the county residents. You know, other than that, we are working with Minnesota Housing Partnership, we did get a grant for some technical assistance with them, and they've been helping us share, kind of shore up our internal procedures, they've been pushing us to get some marketing out, and we do have some marketing pieces that we're ready to, to move forward with, once we're kind of able to, to say, here, let's go, and, and it's always the kind of chicken or egg, do we, do we want to get a successful, you know, loan out there first, and then we, we hit the ground running, or do we want to try to, to mass-market it? A, a big portion of, of, you know, my decision-making when I came in, in, in August, is to make sure we did this prudently, we don't roll it out faster than, than we're ready for, because we don't want to stumble. These are residents' dollars, they're tax dollars, we want to be prudent with how we're using them, that's why a lot of, of thought has gone into these internal procedures, you know, but we're, we're really excited for the program, we're excited to get dollars out there, we're excited to have residents utilize this, and they're, without us doing a lot of marketing yet, there is a lot of buzz. So with that, I, you know, those are the high-level things that I'd like to chat with you guys about, and, and inform you about, if you have questions, if Commissioner Coring has questions, I'd be happy to answer as much as I can, and then be mindful of, of our next presenter.
I don't have a particular question, but I just want to applaud you on your definition of affordability, I think that's a great approach to that particular stumbling block in people's lives, and I, so I think that you're, you're making it very available for people, but I also think the four programs that you outlined are excellent directions to go for the HRA, so I appreciate that very much, Eric, I think with your leadership, you've shown that you have a vision, and, and are looking out for the best interest of the HRA and the tax dollars, but also the people that you are there to serve, so. And I, and I know, Mr. Schomer does a great job on the rehab end of it, he's been doing that for years, and I see that out in Northeast.
Absolutely.
Brainerd, and, and what's going on out there, so I just, I bring that out only because I'm well aware of that one, and I applaud him on his efforts in that arena, as you did. So if anybody, does any other Commissioner have a question?
Well, Mr. Chair, if I can, I'd like to, to kind of make a statement, the National Retailers, Retail Realtor Association has reached out to our association here, the Greater Lakes Realtor Association, with Dolly Manton, they were following up, because Dolly had put a grant out, or requested a grant, and they did some funding to help the HRA do their Housing Trust Fund, and they were following up with that, so they're very impressed with the results, and this says a lot, again, about, I think, the county Commissioners and the decisions that we've made, that not only did we, from that study, establish a Housing Trust Fund, but we also funded it. And so they're doing some follow-up on that, I've actually got the city of Pequot Lakes, because they want to update their housing inventory, to try to do that, is already currently working with the HRA. So they're, this is starting to get some legs now, and I, I'm excited to see what's going to happen into the future. Thank you, Eric.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, anyone else?
We'll keep you appraised of, of, hopefully, next time I talk to you, we'll have a, a project that we can say is out there, and, and we're getting some dollars out there. And again, we appreciate the, the assistance from the county in, in funding this, it's not lost on us, that's a huge thing, it's a big investment, and, and we're, we're hopeful to, to make some really good progress with that.
Well, thank you very much for all you're doing, Eric, we appreciate it, thank you for the update.
You bet.
Debbie, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
For bringing Mr. Sharpentier here, appreciate it.
Have a great day, guys.
See ya.
Can we take a break?
We could take a break.
That'd be great.
We'll call it a relief break.
That we will, thank you.
Our inability to connect face-to-face, I really disappointed that I couldn't drive up to Walker and meet with you this morning, and I look forward to this plague leaving our country, and so that we can once again communicate with facial expressions as well as voice. So I'm here today to provide you the 2021 Camp Ripley update, and I'm Brigadier General Lowell Cruz, I'm the senior commander here at Camp Ripley, have been in position for about four years, and haven't been fired yet, so I'm hoping that that'll continue for a couple more years, and I'm excited to come and, you know, give you a chance to see what Minnesota National Guard, and especially your noisy neighbor to south, Camp Ripley, is doing, over. The next slide? Yes, sir.
Just to let you know, we're not up in Walker, this is Crow Wing County, you're actually talking to us, and so.
I'm sorry, I misplaced you for Cass, I'm, I'm, my apologies, so, even I don't know where I'm at some days. So my next slide is Camp Ripley's mission statement, and I just failed just failed at being the last tier of that, the best neighbor I could, because I'd forgotten where I was at. But, um, you know, we're truly focused on three things. We focus on preparing our facilities for, to train soldiers for our nation's worst state. We prepare our facilities and have great training facilities for our soldiers and our state agency partners for our state's worst state. And we're truly living through some of that right now. And then finally, my last part of my mission is to make sure that I know that Crow Wing County is the people that I'm briefing, and that I'm trying to be the best neighbor we can in that process. So. The next slide, we'll talk a little bit about my senior leadership. Major General Sean Mankey became our adjutant general last summer when John Jensen left to go to Washington, DC. He's supported by CSM Brian Soper, and they're very busy right now supporting the governor with all things Operation Safety Net in the Twin Cities right now. And Sean's a, a great leader. He's very common sense, originally an aviator. So he can keep helicopters in the air that I have no idea how to do. But, um, he's, he's a good man, and I'm very proud to work for him. The next slide talks about the economic impact in 2020 for Camp Ripley and to the community here. You can see on the bottom that we average around $77 million in economic impact a year. 2020 was an interesting year for us. We thought with the pandemic and everything that we would, you know, have less business or less people training here. And in reality, we saw more. And that's the bottom line of why our economic impact is up in the $93 million category. The majority of that is wages, wages and some construction. But the majority of that is extra duty that your Minnesota National Guard soldiers have had over the last year. And we'll talk about that a little bit more when we talk about our COVID impacts. The next slide talks about our accomplishments and events. And in 2020, we hosted over 400,000 mandays of soldiers on the installation. Just as a reminder, when I, a mandate is one soldier for one... Say again, over. All right. A mandate is one soldier for one day, we count. And so if you're here for 14 days, that would be 14 mandays as an individual here on the installation. We average about 65,000 mandays of state agency, local state inter-agency partners training here at Ripley. And you can see that it was significantly less this year. But we definitely made up for it in, in soldier mandays with an increase of almost 100,000 compared to other years. My environmental team continued to show their excellence nationwide by winning the Department of Defense Cultural Resources Award, as well as winning the NGB Environmental Stewardship Award. So we're still continuing to be pretty proud of how those programs compete nationally. And as I'll talk in later slides, that gives me a level of assurance that we're doing things right environmentally. If you drive by 371, you'll see that we added a mile worth of railroad siding along Highway 371 leading to the installation. I have seven miles of railroad that Burlington Northern uses to bring trains into Camp Ripley. And we were really constrained on how many trains we could get in here a day without the siding. So one of the big construction projects that we had last year was to add a mile worth of siding and switches, allowing me to get two trains in and out of the installation at once. We've also expanded our winter operations training by adding a whole bunch of joint partners, Air, Air Force, Navy, and Coast Guard that are coming here in the winter to learn how to survive in extreme cold weather. A lot of those individuals also cut holes in our ice on our lakes and dive underneath that. And so it's some pretty extreme training in an extreme environment here in January and February. And we're proud to be a location where the military can come and do some of that training as well. And we've created a long-term relationship with those organizations. The Navy divers now have been here three years. And the Coast Guard just decided to move their, their cold water diving school to Camp Ripley. So over the next year, we'll be building a program with them that'll allow them to train Coast Guard divers in diving in cold water. We've served, served over the last year as the central hub for the National Guard's response, be it to civil disturbance or COVID. And we're currently deeply involved in the response with the Operation Safety Net going on in the Twin Cities right now. In the middle of COVID last June, we successfully brought 800 soldiers here for almost three weeks and put them in a COVID bubble and prepared them to deploy. And that 800 is part of the 2 of the 135 infantry out of Mankato. Those units have been deployed to Africa for the last year. And in reality, we're going to see them start to float back here this week now, as they end their mobilization for a year where they successfully supported Africa and the US Army, or the US military's presence in Africa. And finally, last summer in July, we, we brought the Armor Brigade Combat Team, all 4,000 of them, through Camp Ripley on their way to the National Training Center in Fort Irwin. Once again, we strove to put that training unit in a bubble. And so the Camp Ripley's role was to conduct all the pre-COVID testing for those individuals and isolate the ones that were positive, so that we could lead that brigade to Fort Irwin, California, where they conducted the first large exercise in a COVID environment for the US Army and proved that you can continue to train and collective train with a lot of people and keep people safe from the, the virus. The next slide talks about the start of our 2020 civil response. Last May and June, we were very busy responding to the after effects of George Floyd's killing. And so inside of that, we drove three battalions of, of soldiers that were here on the installation, training to go to NTC. They got about a six-hour notice, and they shifted trail and pushed into the Twin Cities on a pretty sporty Saturday in, in late May, when we were responding to the civil unrest. Throughout that operation, Camp Ripley continues to be the logistical support center for parts and other things. And I'm pausing for a second because I'm hearing feedback, I guess, from, there we go. I, we may have joined you, I think, in the, in the meeting place. I'm not quite sure. But when we get the picture up, you'll see me. I'm going to continue to cover this dot to waste your time. So part of the logistics support we pushed, obviously, was cost to, to bed our soldiers down and repair parts and MREs. And more importantly, Camp Ripley played a large role in what we call reverse RSOI, which is the return of those soldiers from their duty and making sure that they're safe to go home from their families and all their equipment is accounted for. The next slide talks about some of our COVID-19 responses. And this is really highlighting the medical response that the Minnesota National Guards had this last year. 188 soldiers were activated to help with community-based testing throughout the nation, the state. We had two, almost 300 soldiers that were activated to support long-term healthcare facilities at over 21 different sites. Almost 400 soldiers are supporting vaccination issues. And so I think we're sharing a slide now. Can you confirm that you can see anything on your end? Over.
Yes, I can confirm that. But I'm going to need you to hang up one of your things here.
Yep. I'm going to hang up this phone call, and we'll go into the computer audio.
Okay. You have to unmute yourself, too, Derek. Okay. So you have, I'm going to kick you out over here, I think, or mute you or something. I think you hung up the wrong one. Maybe not.
Can they hear us now?
Yeah, I can hear you. But I can't see your slide anymore. Can you hear us?
Your speaker is off on the right-hand side on the bottom toolbar. Turn it up. Over. Can you hear us on the other end? Come check with Crow Wing, please.
Yes, I can hear you.
There we go. All right. We're rocking now. So we're going to go up a slide. The other way. Thank you. All right. I have you loud and clear, and hopefully you have me. I'm going to start over on this slide. And I apologize for that break in the house space. So Minnesota National Guard's been very active helping the state with COVID response throughout the year on the medical side. As you can see, we had over 200 soldiers that helped with community-based testing at 11 different sites. We continue that effort right now, supporting a FEMA-run site at the state fairgrounds. Almost 300 soldiers supported long-term healthcare facilities as we covered down for them as their staffing numbers took a hit from COVID. And we did that at almost 21 different facilities, where we sent teams of soldiers in to, to support our, our aged elderly and long-term healthcare facilities. Finally, we've been very active in different locations, providing vaccinations, vaccination support. And Camp Ripley's role through all this was the, we managed to a constantly-run isolation support facility. So as our medical professionals, potentially, you know, we're exposed to COVID, we had a place where we could support them. And so they didn't have to go home and, and, and isolated home if they were positive. Finally, on the bottom there, our state medical warehouse has been involved with pushing millions of dollars of PPE and millions of dollars of medical supply, both across the nation as well as to the state of Minnesota. Next slide. Currently, we're very involved in Operation Safety Net. We're integrated with the state agencies, and we, we tell everyone that we are a supporting partner inside of the law enforcement's effort to keep the, the streets and communities in Minnesota safe. And we, Camp Ripley's role in that is we, we were the primary in-processing location for the almost 3,400 soldiers that we've got on duty right now. What that means to me is if you came to Camp Ripley today, you'd probably find 3,400 cars and pickups parked in the parking lots, because those kids came here, mobilized here, and left for duty in the cities. No different than last spring, we are the lead logistical center for everything we need. And we provide support throughout the whole state. Next slide.
Can I stop you for a minute? You need to put your PowerPoint in presenter view because your slides aren't moving. Okay. Or you can click on the left-hand side. That works, too.
Does that work now?
It'll work.
Did you see the slide now?
If you want to put it in presenter mode, there's, like, you see where your volume is on the bottom? It's the little one right to the left of that. Go right there. Click on that.
Yeah, that's where we're at. So I don't know.
Well, that's not working either.
Seeing it through and out there. But, um...
Okay. So you'll just have to click on the left when you want to go to the next slide, okay?
Let's just go back. We'll, we'll brief in this view, because I think it'll be a little easier. And we know that you're seeing the change there. So this slide talks about how does your community get support from the National Guard? And I thought that important just as we brief a lot of community leadership. And we get asked often, how do we get the National Guard? Or how does the National Guard get into a state-level response? On the left there, you see some of the typical missions that we try, that we are tailored to help with. And on the right, the kinds of things that we do for our emergency management partners when we do come into an emergency. It starts with, you know, a disaster in your local community, and your county sheriff asking the State Emergency Operations Center and HSEM for support. They provide an executive order to the governor that he signs, and that turns on the National Guard to come and support your community. And so just wanted to cover that chain of events. And that's truly what's happened throughout the state this last year, be it COVID response or civil disturbance, all sorts of different missions for us. Now, now to move kind of at the heart of what's happened at Camp Ripley, while we've been doing all this responding outside the installation, we continue to update our facilities and do some construction. So we continue to improve and replace the tin huts that are in Area 5 with new lumber mowers. And we, we're adding on to our fire hall facility. This, the picture in the lower left is our renovated fire hall facility that we store the majority of our vehicles in. I have the only full-time fire, one of the only full-time fire departments north of the Twin Cities. And we are very proud of the mutual aid agreement we have with the local community that allows them to respond outside and provide some coverage in the Fort Ripley area and things like that. Other renovations throughout the installation are part of our master plan that helps us move forward. The final point there is we're continuing to work on our energy resilience. We've now, with the 60-acre solar field that we have on the installation, we've now got updated generators on all our substations. And over the next year, we'll be putting in this data control system that will allow us to go off of the grid and balance our own load with our solar power and generation power if we have to. And so that's very exciting to gain some energy resiliency there for us as well. Next slide, please. Some of the things we're going to do in 2021, in the picture there in the left, is the historic Nelson Hall, which is the original post-headquarters. Our plan is to put some money back into that and renovate the interior so that we can move our new headquarters, or our headquarters theme back into that building. It's been the home of the DNR for about the last 20 years. And the Army's going to use it again here in the future. We're also working through, this summer, we're going to start the construction of a, a, a Joint Emergency Response Training Center. That, that's money that came out of the legislation almost five years ago as part of the, the bonding money to build the facility to train our local responders on how to respond to oil car spills and fires and natural gas pipeline head fires and things like that. And so that'll be located inside of our emergency management training set, or our, our emergency vehicle operations course, our EVOC course. And will be another great apparatus for our fire responders to come here and train on Camp Ripley. We're working through building some more machine sheds to store our vehicles in. That's the motor vehicle sheds in Area 19. We're also continuing our improvements of Area 5, which is the area that we've just converted from tin huts to actual CMU dirts. And now we're going to work on some of the dining facilities and headquarters buildings in that area. We're also adding the addition to our fire hall building with the admin and billeting quarters for our firefighters. They're on a 24-hour shift. And so we need a place where they can actually get some, get some rest while they're waiting for a call as well. So a few things in the upper construction wise. Next slide. And then, if you haven't been tracking, the latest bonding bill included $13 million for this Minnesota Military Museum. The current museum is located on Camp Ripley. And we're very excited about the fact that it's going to get a chance to move off the installation to the orange area there. That orange area is a strip of land between the Minnesota State Veterans Cemetery and Highway 371. That land was donated by a local farmer, which is pretty cool. The legislature allocated $13 million to build a museum structure and... The legislature allocated $13 million to build a museum structure and, and grounds in that area. I know they've got almost $5 million of additional donations from private industry, and that's gonna give them the chance to build a phenomenal museum out there. They are a 501(c) and kind of taken care of by the Department of Military Affairs, and so, pretty cool expansion of their capability. Next slide. We look ahead for the next two quarters of training. You can see in the graph there, the green is our soldier load and the blue is our civilian. We're really busy in May, and we're probably even gonna be a little busier once we get done with our activities in the Twin Cities as we kind of catch up on some of the training we missed in April. Big things coming there as well as our spring turkey hunt and our, with the Department of Veterans Affairs, and will occur here in the next couple of weeks. The State Patrol is running one of their first of their two academies that they're gonna have this year, and we just completed a week or so ago the best wear competition where our best NCOs and soldiers compete at the state level here so that they can go compete at the national level and to show who's the best skillset of being, being essentially an infantryman. Next slide. We roll into quarter four. You can, you can see our training load is really high in August. August is also a time where we'll probably be your noisiest neighbor in the Southwest with a bunch of field artillery units here in the August timeframe. And this summer, we also have plans to have our, our Army National Guard Youth Camp back on the installation. It took a year off last year, but we think we can safely hold that again this year. And then, September, the numbers of civilians training here is almost equal to our number of military, and a big part of that is the DOT snowplow driving. We will do an open house here the first weekend in September, or the second weekend, or the first weekend after Labor Day, I guess, and that's, we're gonna highlight this year the contribution of our Native Americans in our defense, and so, we're pretty excited about that as well. Next slide. Talked a little bit about the DNR, their State Patrol Academy. They're one of my full-time partners on the installation with the DNR, HSEM, and MINDOT. This year's biggest improvement is we've co-located all those agencies into the Emergency Management Training Center, and we're hoping that adds to more collaboration for them, but it really put all the state partners in one facility and gave them ownership of that facility. Next slide. And then, as we work through our community already a little bit, already talked about our open house in September where we plan to work with the local tribes to highlight our Native American veterans. We are starting to do some of our environmental tours and school tours, starting to get that planned. This last year, we had a banner year for the food drive, taking almost 1,000 pounds of food to the Little Falls Food Shelf. We also filled over 100 gift tags during the Christmas season for the Little Falls Gift Tag Program. We've done a couple Make-A-Wish sponsorship programs, and we've got, as I talked earlier, our Disabled American Veteran and Soldier Turkey Hunts this spring. We're gonna do some tour for the troops the 5th of June with some professional fishermen and a lot of different events that we pride ourselves in and we're a part of. Next slide. Talked about it a little bit earlier, but our conservation program again won a DoD-level award, which is pretty important when you consider the number of installations that are the Army, Air Force, Marines, and the National Guard. We are nationally known for our environmental program, and we are, continue to perform well when we compete against other installations in recognition for our program. We had a great spring where we, we went, visited eight different bears in their den this spring and saw baby cubs, but more importantly, continued our research with Medtronics on how bears hibernate. Our wolf pack, we've got some collared wolves, so we continue to track our, our wolves inside of the installation, and just truly pretty proud of the fact that we can keep the installation looking like the day we, we gained it as a resource for the state. Next slide. With that environmental, with having an installation like Camp Ripley, we've got a lot of environmental oversight, a lot of different agencies come and make sure that we're taking care of the place, and that's really what the purpose of this list is, is to talk about all the different agencies and the oversight we have. And, you know, that's the heart of the, the packages that my team puts forward when they compete at the national level for awards is how well they're complying with a lot of this oversight, and that gives me a level of assurance in, hopefully you as well, that we're doing a great job with our, with the environmental resources we have here. Next slide. Of course, we couldn't do that, that great environmental work without a lot of different partners that help us. You know, the Department of Natural Resources is a great partner here, the Minnesota Board of Water and Soil Resources Bowser. It's very important in helping us manage the AICUP program, and obviously, we've got active apprentices and internship opportunities from the local universities, both Central Lakes College and St. Cloud State. Next slide. We're burning again today. We, all the different colored areas on the map are areas that we burn every year. We do this burning so that we can prevent fire from becoming a problem for us later in the, in the year, either preventing training or getting too big for us to handle. And so, we burn almost 15,000 acres a year, and we, today will probably be around 3,000 of that done by the end of today. We're about 2,000 today, up to date, and so, that, that, that wildland fire is predominantly done by my fire department and my environmental team, and they've got that process down to the science. And so, pretty, you know, we'll be creating some smoke. Slide. Finally, under the AICUP program, all areas in green are areas that we brought into AICUP. You know, this last year was kind of an average year for us with federal funding, about $9.5 that allows some acquisitions there instead of the AICUP program. We also leveraged $1.3 million of state funding out of our SAM's Dirty Childmore Council. That combined $3 million gives us a chance to, to continue to add some, some properties into the AICUP profile. Just a reminder there, you know, we, that, that's a lifetime easement that we're offering a landowner, and they're gaining almost sometimes 50% of value of their land for that easement and the agreement to keep that land in a state that it's in right now to prevent development, and that's something that's very important to me, to protect the millions of dollars that we've invested in the Camp Ripley itself. One other cool things that we worked with through the Sentinel Landscape Process is the Natural Resource Conservation Service is placing a forester here inside of my staff. So, they're funding a position for three years. That individual's job is to go out and help local landowners around Camp Ripley understand how to control their own prescribed burning programs and their own hazard reduction burns to get rid of buck brush and things like that, and so, that individual be stationed here at Camp Ripley with the mission of helping local landowners improve their properties as well. And finally, ladies and gentlemen, we reached the questions slide with the picture of my team on the very familiar hillside outsider entrance with the Camp Ripley tank. I apologize throughout for how, how broken up the whole presentation was, but I'll be open to any questions you have for me. Thank you.
Brigadier General, I want to take the opportunity to, to thank you, and there's no need to apologize. We appreciate the update. It's obvious that you have a huge economic impact in the central Minnesota area, and the relationship between the, the counties and the cities with, with your organization and your staff is outstanding, and so, I just want to express our, our appreciation for everything that you folks do down there and continue to build on, on what you're doing down there. So, thank you very much. Any of the other commissioners have remarks? Commissioner Coring?
No, I mean, no questions.
Okay, again, thank you very...
I just want a question, a comment. No, I'm good.
Having a hard time? I think you're breaking up, Commissioner.
Oh, there's a bad storm down here, but I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay. Again, thank you, Brigadier General Cruz. We appreciate it, and we'll look forward to a report next year. Thank you very much.
I'll look forward to coming to Brainerd and talking to you in face-to-face. Once again, my apologies for mistaking you in camp.
We'll look forward to seeing you in person. Thank you.
All right. Have a good day.
With that, we'll move on to our final item, which is the Mississippi River watershed. Ms. Barick and Mr. Free will be presenting this issue.
All right. Well, good afternoon, good morning. If you guys have any further ones ready. Good morning. This is Jake Free, one of the Environmental Services Supervisors with Land Services. I've got Melissa with me, District Manager with Crow Wing Soil and Water Conservation District. Partnership with Crow Wing Soil and Water Conservation District, and we have another one watershed, one plan in the works here, and that's getting ready to be revved up. And based on our, our last experience with our Pine River, one watershed, one plan, really looking forward to continuing the relationships with area counties, area soil and water conservation districts, and just moving forward. So, what we have here, and what I'm gonna try and do here is share my screen, just one moment. Okay, I think everyone can see that at this point. We have the Mississippi River Brainerd watershed boundary, and you can see that it extends across a few counties, Todd, Morrison, Crow Wing, and Aiken Counties. And this is a watershed that's just south of the Pine River watershed, which many folks are familiar with. Pine River is just to the north, and the Mississippi River Brainerd is to the south. There is a request for proposal that's being looked at and applied for with our partners to apply for the funding to start the planning process for the Mississippi River Brainerd One Watershed One Plan. Unlike the Pine River watershed, there'll be multiple, more partners, more opportunities. The request, or the, the discussion here today at the committee as a whole is just to, is just to get your feedback on a proposed resolution that will be coming to the county board a little bit later, seeking support to develop the plan and start the planning process. It's, it's, it's needed to have this resolution as part of the request for proposal so that we can have a very strong application as we begin the watershed planning process. Typically, that process will take about 18 months to two years to see it all the way through. Melissa's gonna go through a little bit more on the particulars of what makes this particular watershed maybe unique, some of the attributes that it has, and some of the aspects that this has some fairly significantly sized cities that it goes through among different counties. So, Melissa, if you want to take it from here?
Yeah. So, Commissioners, just, we have met as sort of the different counties. So, again, this is kind of four different counties, Aiken, Crow Wing, and then Morrison and Todd. And we have met with those different partners, and they're all interested in pursuing this planning opportunity to look at that entire watershed. And the Crow Wing County Water Plan that was made in 2013, you can see on this map that Jake is showing these different risk classifications. So, the Brainerd Mississippi watershed is unique in the fact that it has lots of lakes, it has lots of forests, and then we also do have some more agricultural land use and then lots of urban here in the city of Baxter and city of Brainerd. And so, you can see the pink color was kind of the higher-risk classification, so those areas had higher percent of unprotected land as well as potential for higher risk just based off the land use. And then, these darker green areas were areas that were already protected and have a fair amount of public ownership land, and so, this watershed specifically has a lot of different interest groups. We have reached out to the city of Brainerd to see if they want to be involved in this planning process as well as the city of Baxter. Both of those communities, because they are larger, are required through the state to have additional stormwater requirements, and so, they, I think, the timing as well, because they just reapplied for a new permit, and so, all the other counties are supportive. And we did have some initial discussion with the other counties to just kind of verify that these groups would be interested at the end, as we move forward from a planning group to some type of invitation structure, that we would be doing some type of collaboration. I know there was some discussion at the last county board meeting regarding Joint Powers Board, and so, we want to ensure that, you know, as we move forward, that this planning process would formulate more of a collaboration model. And, and so, I think that is at the best interest of all the counties, and the counties are interested in moving forward that way. And so, just to give you some timelines, the grant, or the request for proposals due at the end, or beginning of June, and then the state of Minnesota will be reviewing those applications, or there's requests, and then sometime in the fall of 2021, they would notify us if we were accepted into the program, and then, at that point, we would come back to the county board to develop a memorandum of agreement of how that planning's gonna look, and we would kind of spell out the roles from the different counties, soil-water conservation districts, as well as kind of looking at that sort of structure of who from the county board wants to be a part of the, the policy committee. And just a reminder too is, you know, the policy committee is the one that really steers the ship and approves that plan, and so, you know, I think there's great opportunity for the county to be involved, and this specific watershed, it kind of goes over many different county commissioner districts. But with that, I guess, Jake, if you want to add anything else? Did I miss something?
No. I think it's a significant watershed in the county, as we said. I believe the city of Little Falls, the city of Aiken, is kind of unique, that it just naturally carves into those, and so, there's, I think there's gonna be a lot of major players on this one and, and a lot of interest, and it's a very important watershed in the county, goes right through the heart of it. And we're just, just to sort of wrap a ball on it before we get into questions or comments, just here to look for any comments that you might have or questions on the proposed resolution to support the start of this planning process. And again, as Melissa was saying, this actually goes through a couple of commissioner districts, more than just one or two. I, I think this might hit three or four commissioner districts, probably more, so Commissioner Coring, Commissioner Hoag's area in particular. So, there'll be a discussion later on about who would be on a policy committee where we, where they get to make some decisions and recommendations, and... where they get to make some decisions and recommendations and bump the stove a little bit on, um, you know, who might, uh, be good from the county board to be on that policy committee as appointed by the chair. So I, I'll, we'll take any questions, comments that you have at this time.
Commissioner Coring, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, no questions from me. Thank you.
Okay, any other commissioners have questions? And that, I, I know the one point that wasn't brought up is that the Mississippi Headwaters Board is in supportive of this also and, and that they, uh, follows the mission that they have. So, you know, as a member of that board, I also support this. So I'm looking forward to it. It'll be before the board at some point, as you mentioned, Jake. So the resolution, which is on page two, we'll have an opportunity to, to read it over and brief ourselves on that prior to it coming for a vote at the board meeting. So thank you, Melissa, and thank you Jake for the presentation. I think this is an important watershed to consider and, and so I'm looking forward to a positive outcome, but we'll see how the vote goes. But thank you very much. Anything else?
Thank you.
Anything else?
I think that's it, Melissa. I think, uh, I think we're good. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you guys. Nothing else from board members? If not, Commissioner Coring, anything else from you?
Uh, nothing from me, Mr. Chair. I'll see you in person next week at the county board meeting.
And I'll reiterate what I said yesterday, drive safely. Looked like it's a hot day there. I saw you using a towel to wipe off when you came in, so, um, time, time to come back to this forty-degree weather.
It's raining cats and dogs, so.
All right, well, drive safely and we'll see you next week.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll end today's meeting.
Twenty-degree weather.
All right.